We'll call this meeting of the Craving County Board of Commissioners Regular Session for Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as Mr. Grady, our county attorney, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Heavenly Father, we pray for your protection for this assembled body. May the brightness of your countenance shine upon them. Keep them in your hand and give them the assurance of your walk with them as they go about the business of deliberating the affairs of our beloved county. May they find in you the strength to withstand those who criticize, give them the humility to accept aid when offered, and the courage to do the right thing. Holy Father, make them aware of your presence as they take part in that divinely appointed experiment we call human government. Then at the end of the day, let them know, all that is required of you is to love mercy, do justly, and to walk humbly with their God. In his holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome each of you here this evening to the first meeting of 2024. Happy New Year to each of you. And to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. I would ask that all of us please make sure that our cellphones are on silence so they would not disrupt the meeting. We would greatly appreciate that. Commissioners, you have before you your agendas. Are there any items that you desire to add or to pull from tonight's agenda? Make a motion to approve the presentation. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Tonight, we're very honored to have with us a group from Cooperative Extension for 4-H Presentation, Ms. Ashley Brooks, who is, at the present time, I believe, our interim director for Extension for Craving County. So Ms. Ashley, come forward. We're going to turn it over to you and let you recognize those individuals with us this evening. Welcome.
Thank you so much for letting me speak before you this evening. I have some amazing youth that I'm excited to recognize tonight. 4-H has been in Extension in North Carolina for over 100 years, and we are very proud that, for the first time ever in North Carolina since the inception of the 1965 poultry competition, our team from Craving County, with an addition from Halifax County, won Nationals this year in poultry judging. So if you may, if you're wondering what is poultry judging entail, it's a very long competition. These kids have been practicing for six years to attain this. They are judging live birds, they are judging ready-to-cook birds, interior or exterior eggs, learning the different parts, all according to USDA standards against professional judges. It's a competition that's over five hours long and hosted by the University of Kentucky. And so we went there this year after being asked by NC State University to represent North Carolina, and I am proud to recognize these three. So I'm going to call them up and let you know what they have won, and I'll ask them to stand here. And I know you want to take a picture when we're through. So Connor Howard, won sixth place overall individual market eggs, first place on the production hens team, second place for market poultry on the team, third place market eggs, first place overall national team. Come on up here. Elizabeth Peluso, won third place individual overall market poultry, sixth place overall national individual participant or national competitor, first place team production hens, second place team market poultry, third place team market eggs, and first place overall national team. Matthew Peluso, won first place individual production hens, fifth place individual market eggs, fourth place individual or fourth place overall national production individual, first place team production hens, second place team market poultry, third place team market eggs, and first place overall national. And Tessa Darnell, who is from Halifax County, who joined us, she could not be here this evening, but she won seventh place overall individual market poultry, 19th place overall national individual, first place team for production hens, second for market poultry, third for market eggs, and first for the overall national team. This was out of 18 teams from across the country and 72 individuals that judged on the national level. So they did, they have worked hard, they have done really well, and I am so very proud of them.
So while y'all are standing there in front of everybody, do y'all have anything you want to say? We'll start with you, Elizabeth. You got any comment?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Ashley, who has been our coach and been on this whole time. She has been an amazing coach, helping us and guiding us, and we owe a lot of thanks to her.
Great. That's good. Mr. Connor?
Same thing that she said. Thank you a lot, Ms. Ashley, because we couldn't have done it without you. If I had her because, I doubt we would have made it to Nationals.
You guys are going to make me cry.
Hey, Mr. Matthew, anything?
I'll follow up with a very similar comment. Thank you, Ms. Ashley, for putting up with us in all of our craziness for six and a half years and all the, our parents and all the people who shoveled us around to state competitions and practice for six and a half years.
They've put in a lot of work, going to NC State University, practicing, practicing here multiple times at contests that we've hosted at the Extension Office, so we're very proud of them.
Well, on behalf of this Board of Commissioners, I want to tell the three of you, Ms. Ashley also, and on behalf of the 100,000 citizens of this county, we congratulate you, and we're proud of you, and this is great recognition for this county, especially somebody involved in agriculture. I just love this, and thank you so much. Commissioners, if we could, we want to take a picture with them. So how y'all want, let's get, Ms. Amber, we'll let you direct us. How you want, if everybody wants to stand up, commissioners, maybe we can see us from the back?
Yeah, well, you should all stand up and all.
Okay. Commissioners, item two, we have the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
Okay. We will move to item three. Under consent agenda, we have before you the minutes of the December 18th, 2023 Regular Session, and then we have tax releases and refunds. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next, commissioners, we have item four, social services. We have Mr. Jeffrey Merritt with us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Happy birthday. And County Manager.
Let me just bring before you an amendment in order to budget some money that's currently in our budget for the block grant into one of our social services. I, line items, we're doing something different this year in working with the AAA and have to, you know, move these funds and expend these funds, and instead of the funds going directly to Carts, we're contracting with Carts as lead agency to provide the transportation services. So with that, a budget amendment was needed. It'll still be the same services that we do for transportation through the Home Care Community Block Grant, it's just a different way in which we budget the money.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any discussion about the budget amendment? Here, no questions. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $50,000. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. And Jeff, I know we've been in months past asking you, any new information on Medicaid expansion? You got anything new this time?
Well, as Medicaid, yeah, I do. Medicaid expansion started December 1st officially, and so we're, just got our month's numbers for applications, and they're quite staggering, I would say, compared to December of last year. We took a total of 604 applications in December of 2022. In December of 2023, we took 1,190, which is a 97% increase. The vast majority of those increase was in adult Medicaid, 537 new applications compared in December 2023 compared to December 2022, which, that's probably a result of the federally facilitated marketplace being open as well, but it's kind of showing us what we thought that the majority of people who were going to be applying for Medicaid and being determined eligible for Medicaid are going to be those that, you know, single adults or couples adults that are trying, without children. So, and we've got some numbers as well. We get numbers from the state about pending applications, those that we've already taken that were in the eligibility process. And I looked at our numbers from last year, which was our first Business Day report after the New Year holiday, and we had, we had 517 pending applications then. As of today, we have 1,134, which is a 119% increase. You know, I looked at some other counties around that's similar in size with us, Moore has a 109% increase, Cleveland, a 64% increase, Lincoln, a 75% increase. Then I looked at some of the urban counties and totaled some numbers. Mecklenburg has a 109% increase, Wake, 150%, Forsyth, 190% increase, Pitt, a 113% increase, Carteret and some, and Pitt's, the neighboring counties, Pitt, Carteret, Beaufort, and Lenore. Carteret, a 209% increase in pending applications from a year ago. Beaufort, a 77% increase, and Lenore, 140% increase. So I want to continue to try to look at these numbers, not every day, but maybe two or three times a month, to see how they're, to see essentially what the data's showing us in regards to Medicaid expansion, the program in the federally facilitated marketplace. So I'll be happy to come and report back to the board. I'll be giving that information to Jack, too. He's already, he already has this, you know, just as of today, and that we were trying to look the first Business Day in January, trying to catch the whole month of December. So I will say that, you know, rightfully so, our staff, we want to serve the citizens as best we can, and these are not normal times, but we are working as hard as we can. We're just, we're in the same boat as every other DSS. We're just inundated with applications, and we're going to try to work those as expeditedly as possible.
Any questions from the board? Not Jeff, thank you. Please relay to your staff. We appreciate them for what they're doing.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, next, we have appointments for item five. You have pending, current, and upcoming. Under pending, are there any nominations from the floor for any of those? Okay. Here, none. We will move to current. The first item is Craving County Health Board. We have several seats that are up this evening. The first is a seat from Carolina East, Mr. Jim Davis, who is currently serving. Do we have a nomination?
I have so nominated.
Okay. We have a nomination of Mr. Jim Davis. Do you have additional nominations from the board? Here, none. We were accept by acclamation. Okay. Next, we have the Irving Patrick seat, citizen rep who seeks reappointment. We have Mr. Adia Coleman, who is also submitting application.
Adia.
Adia.
It's Mr. Adia.
Okay. I apologize. Thank you for the correction. Is that, do we have nominations?
I nominate Adia Coleman.
We have a nomination of Adia Coleman. Are there additional nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate Irving Patrick.
We have a nomination of Mr. Irving Patrick. So we have two nominations for this position. Are there additional nominations? All right. Here, none. We have nomination of Adia Coleman and Mr. Irving Patrick. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
When I call the roll, either state Irving Patrick or Adia Coleman, so I know how to mark. Commissioner Smith?
Adia Coleman. And should we, does everyone know who they are?
I think everybody's had the opportunity to read your general package.
Commissioner Howard?
Irving Patrick.
Commissioner Hunt?
Irving Patrick.
Commissioner Mark?
Adia Coleman.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Irving Patrick.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Adia Coleman.
And Chairman Jones?
Irving Patrick. So we have.
Four to three, Irving Patrick.
Okay. So Mr. Patrick. All right. Thank you. We next would go to the next one. Holly Meadows, who seeks appointment to fill the vacated seat of Janelle Butts, who's the pharmaceutical rep.
I nominate her.
Okay. We have the nomination of Ms. Janelle Butts. Are there additional?
Holly Meadows.
I meant Holly. Thank you for the correction. Ms. Meadows, are there additional nominations? Here, none. We were accept by acclamation, Ms. Meadows. And then you have Mr. Ronald May, the physician.
I nominate Mr. May.
Okay. We have nomination of Mr. May, Dr. May. Are additional nominations from the floor? Here, none. We were accept by acclamation. All right. Then you have the Co-City Craving County Library Board, Mr. John Hawkins. I would ask commissioners, if you would, to let us defer consideration of this tonight. I hear no objection from anyone. Okay. The next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. I've talked to Commissioner Mark. He has asked to defer consideration of this tonight, so we would also hear no concerns. Then we have the Juvenile Crime Provincial Council, seat 20, Parks and Recreation. You have the applicant of Andrew Kendall, who seeks appointment. Questions are the board?
I would appoint him.
Okay. We have Mr. Kendall, has been nominated. We have additional nominations. Here, none. We were accept by acclamation. That takes care of all our current appointments. We have then the upcoming terms expiring in January, February. Please take note of that. Commissioners, before we get into County Attorney's Report, I know some of our young folks that are here this evening probably need to depart and their families, but we want the opportunity to be able to speak to them just a minute. I want to ask for a five-minute recess, that we may do that, and just to speak to them, so they can, if they want to be able to leave, and then we'll continue with the rest of our meeting. Here, no objection? Before you do that? Yes. I'd just say to the group and to everybody, I spent six years in 4-H many, many, many years ago, and I have fond memories, and it was a great learning experience. So congratulations to you for doing that. All right. Commissioners, we'll come back to order. The next item we have is County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady.
Mr. Chairman, I'm for it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Happy New Year to you. Next item we have on the agenda is the petition of citizens for general topics. Mr. Can, Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, and I can't read it.
Okay.
So all I can say is says Vic. Would that be you?
That'd be me.
Okay.
All right. You, go ahead.
Your handwriting is like for somebody that's very, very popular, very talented, but I can't read it. So I can read the Vic part.
I'm no doctor.
If you will, you could come to the podium here, and we would ask you, as we always do with folks, if you will, just state your name and address, and you, we have three minutes. All right. Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm here to thank you guys for help. I spoke to North Carolina Utilities Commission. They told me to speak to you. My water bill, somebody has put in my, the water company has put a bill in my name without my knowledge. I applied for a bill January 23rd of this year, last year, and my first bill was December and January with my name on it. And I requested, you know, I'm not paying two months' bills. Then I got cut off after, I think it was 10 days after my application. And then I asked FOIA, I was told to FOIA, a year or two of the bill, of the bills. How long is, how long has this bill been in my name? Been it three times. Three times they have been denied. When I make a $50 payment on a $23 bill, I expect the rest of the $23, the $27, be applied to the bill. It is not being applied to the bill. And the reason why I know this is because what they did was, well, anyway, I'm going, Ms., Ms., yes. I'm going to email her all my papers.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Vice Chair, is that anyone else signed up? That's all? Okay. All right. County Manager's Report. Mr. White. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
2024, first meeting. I have a lot of updates for you, for your calendar tonight. All of it, of course, will be in memos, but just to make sure we get it on the record, on January 23rd, which is a Tuesday, at 2:00 PM, we'll be hosting our Annual Employee Service Awards. It's my favorite event of the year. We recognize employees in their tenure here in Craving County in five-year increments. We've had as much as a 45 before. I don't know if there's, Amber has one of those this year, but, oh, we got a 40 this year. But it's really exciting to get to spend time, have some fellowship with our fellow employees, and as I told you at our last meeting in 2023, they're our greatest asset. So we have that. That'll be at the Convention Center that day. On January 30th, which is also a Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we'll have our Annual Opioid Epidemic Response Community Meeting. And this is required because of the MOA we have with the settlement, with the Attorney General, and, and the whole shebang there. This meeting, Amber and Eric Lund, our opioid manager, and Jasmine will all be providing information. And what the, the purpose of this meeting is really to hear feedback from others. What are programs that we need to be looking at? What are needs of different communities? So we'll send out, Amber, I think, invitations to all our municipal partners, right, and other folks that are interested parties there.
Jeff, what was the date on that?
That is January the 30th. It's a Tuesday.
Okay. At 1400?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll, we'll, of course, send, then the next memo, we'll put that in there as well. And we've had a rash of retirements. I'm putting a moratorium on it in 2024, but one got by me, and I just, I don't want to say something special about her because she's been with us here for 30 years, and that's Debbie Hodges, our risk manager, safety coordinator. Debbie's done a fantastic job. Her job certainly hasn't got easier as the county's grown and we do more, more things in the community, but Debbie's done a great job. She's served our county well, and she's probably been, other than Amber, the largest Team Craving advocate that we have. Craven advocate that we have. And she's always done a great job putting together employee events and having different challenges related to wellness. So I want to wish Debbie well in her retirement. Lastly, and I'm probably going to steal thunder from two Commissioners, and I'm sorry for that, we're really pleased in the month of January to host two air property and will clinics in two different areas of Craven County. On January the 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we'll be at the James City Community Center on Plum Street. And what these events are, we'll bring in attorneys through legal aid and financial folks through Wells Fargo to provide services to folks to help them with estate planning long-term. Many of you are aware, as we've talked about, some of the challenges before closure, it's about how the property is left through family. This is an opportunity for family to have free resources in the community to do that. The second one, on January 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, will be at the Harlow Community Center at 125 Cadet School Road. And those are just, I think these are, there was one in New Bern back in the fall. These are the first two, and we intend to bring one of these to every Commissioner's district as we move through the year. Because I think it's important, each district has challenges with these issues, so. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report. I'm here if you have any questions or items.
Jack, the first one you mentioned is in my district, and I'm going to have Ms. Myrtle put a flyer in the various churches. But how are we, do we have any way of getting that message out on Facebook, Sun Journal, to let the community know?
Yes, sir.
That this is available and that it doesn't cost them anything?
We do. So Lauren, in my office, spearheaded this effort. Of course, today was our last day, but we're going to pick that effort up and do just the things you said, social media. Some of our folks who are familiar with these areas are going to do some door-to-door things, churches. Commissioner Hunt's had some real good luck with getting the message out through churches. And we'll, we'll find the medium that's right for each community. It may be a little different each place we go.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Well, yes, which is very similar. You said this is going to move to other areas of the community throughout the year?
Yes, sir. Ma'am, sorry.
I know I've got some, some of my districts are very heavily senior, and I think this would be very welcomed.
Absolutely. We plan on doing at least one in each Commissioner district in 2024.
Fantastic, thank you.
Hi.
Commissioner Smith, you have something?
I just wanted to repeat what Ms. Smith said. My district is very heavy with air properties, so I appreciate us working there as well.
We plan on doing them in twos like this, and we're going to give legal aid a little time to recover after these two, and do some of the spring, summer, and fall. So we'll get to everybody.
Jack, I do have something. And we got one of our New Bern Board of Aldermen here, Mr. Bob Brinson, and so I don't want him to take this slap to the city. It's not intentioned to be that, but I've had a lot of calls in the last few days, well, two weeks, about parking at the tax office. And, you know, folks are asking us, or asking me, why I can't, why is there no parking now in the, our parking lot that the county owns? I know I went to pay my taxes, and there were no parking places there. Will you help me tonight to appropriately to, just explain what's happened with our parking situation?
Sure, I'll be happy to. So for many years, we leased about 12 parking places in the lot that fronts City Hall. That would be Craven and Pollock.
Next door to the tax office.
Yeah, next door to the tax office, at least 12 spots from the city. The city did away with all the long-term leases, not just the county's, there were other individuals at least, and it's now a per-hour pay-as-you-go parking concept. So you, I say, I've never done it, but I assume you use like a cell phone, you mark the spot, you pay online, you go do your business. And those spots that we traditionally leased were where we put our employees, so that we had spots on our side, on the tax office side. So now, not only we lost the 12, we've moved some of the county cars to the Sudan Building, but on days like you said, when you're there to pay, there's just not going to be any parking.
So I reckon, and Bob, this is what, something I'd like to work with you or this board, I would ask maybe for next year. We still got a few more days left. We can't do nothing about it this year. But, and you might have seen it, because you live right there, I don't know how much you observed it, but maybe next year, we might try to work out something with the city, the last three weeks of the tax season, of paying your property tax. See if we can work out something about opening up some spaces. For folks in, I know rural part of the county, you know, with, some of them don't come downtown but once a year. You may have that in Harlow, too.
I actually had a resident get a $25 ticket.
Okay.
Trying to go in the tax building.
So, you know, it, it's, it's not as easy for some across the county as it is for those that are accustomed to it every day. And we're already, they're already upset enough to have to come pay the property taxes, and then trying to find adequate parking. So just something that maybe we could work on towards next season, maybe, sir.
Just a clarification. If you park on the street, you have at least two hours. Well, I don't think anybody spends two hours in there. And there is typically street parking. It may take a half a block of a walk, but I've been, I've been watching it, and there is almost always spots along Pollock Street within a block, both, both directions, and on Craven Street. So anybody that parks on any of those streets has at least two hours. And I say at least because it's two hours from when the meter person spots your vehicle. Well, they may not spot it for who knows how long, but when they do spot it, and they make note of it, then you have two hours. So you have a minimum of two hours. And if you pull into the lot that used to be, it's, it's empty, and you can pay, it's $1. It's $1 to pull in there, park for an hour. And again, I don't think anybody takes more than an hour to go in and pay their taxes.
Right.
So I think the problem, and Bob, correct me if you have a different thought, it's the, it's the challenge for, to know how to do it. Because when you pull in, there was a sign there, and you got to read the sign, and then you've got to go online, and not everybody is comfortable or competent maybe at doing that. So I think that's the issue. It's, it's, you can, you can park, I think, all day for six bucks or eight bucks, but it's $1 an hour, and then when you're there for six hours, then it's still, stays $6 for the rest of the day, six or eight. So again, it's, it's only a buck, but it's the confusion.
Yeah.
To know, how do I pay? If they had a, if it was a deal where the, you pull a ticket out, and then when you pay, when you go out, it would be simple. But the city shows not to do that, and I ask about that. Why, why didn't you do that? It's quite expensive to put the apparatus in, and people are constantly pulling in there and using the ATM, and then they couldn't do that. So there's several reasons why they didn't go that way. Anyway, just, just as a point of clarification.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Smith, did you have something?
I, I too had a problem when I went to pay my taxes. I guess I waited too long because it was toward the end of the year. The first day, I didn't see any parking spaces, and so I just drove away and went back another day, thinking that I would find some. So the, my second time I went, I found no parking spaces on the street or in the parking lot, except there were spaces in the parking lot, but they were numbered, and it said, I believe it said to employees.
Yes.
Employees. So I called, county employees, it said. So I called down here to this office, maybe wrong, and I said, I've got to go into the tax office for just a minute. Do you think I could get away with a county employee for? And Allison told me yes, to take a chance, and that's what I did. So I did find it.
Those spaces are designated for individuals. So the space where you parked, the person either wasn't there that day, or they had left, or whatever. That's.
But anyway.
I'm not trying to make more out of it.
I understand.
Don't get me wrong, Bob, that's not the point of this. I just, we were not, probably didn't, all this happened this year. Yeah. On the spur of the moment. We didn't think about it probably as we should have to have those discussions. I'm just saying.
Yep.
Maybe we could have those discussions. Might work out something, we might not, but just looking at next tax.
I think at least it should be publicized, so folk could.
Right.
Expect that before they go down there.
Anything else from the board for the county manager? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, next, we have Commissioners reports. Commissioner Smith, you want to start us out this evening?
Well, I, I have nothing special to report. I, I had a good Christmas and a great New Year's Day, so looking forward to working with all of you next year. This year, this year now.
This year.
Yes. Commissioner Hunt?
I'll report.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howard?
No, no report.
Okay.
Well, it's happy birthday to Commissioner Mitchell, if you don't mind me announcing it, so happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to me, happy new year to everyone else, and let's look forward to a productive 2024.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just one thing. I lose track of what the timing was, but sometime in the latter part of December, a group of us did another tour of James City and reviewed the progress that's been made. We were able to see several more houses that have been torn down that were vacant. We've kind of, I think, gotten to a standstill now, and now the, the low-hanging fruit has been picked, and now we got, really figure out how to go to the next step. There's still probably 20 to 30 homes that are vacant. I'm guessing that number, I, we didn't count them specifically, but that's down from about 75 homes about four years ago. So we have gotten a lot of, of bad facilities, bad houses torn down. Now we got to figure out how to, to close the rest of them out. So just hats off to the planning department, and they're the ones that have worked hard at this, and. And our attorney has helped us with letters to these people. But again, getting back to the, the seminars that are going to be held on, in your area and my area this month, a number of these homes, I know one specific, I asked, is someone paying the taxes? This place is absolutely incredibly bad. And the answer was yes. And I said, well, how much are the taxes? $50 a year. So yeah, somebody in the family, some heir, could be a granddaughter, niece, nephew, whomever, pays the taxes every year, and that's, that's all they absolutely have to do, I guess. So this gets back to the fact that we don't have any zoning that requires, like the city does, that requires people to maintain their property, and it's a, it's a challenge, so we need to work at that as we go down the road. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, as always, our friend from District Five, we, we welcome you. We thank you for always being at these meetings, for your presence. Alderman Brinson, thank you. Anything from the city?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. Just want to wish all the Commissioners and staff a happy new year, and I do look forward to working with you on a few of those issues in 2024, and be happy to do so.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation here. And always, Mr. McFadden, thank you for your service, for being here this evening. All right, Commissioners, anything to bring up tonight?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion as second, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand and adjourn.